We want to the May 13th Planning and Zoning Meeting. It's approximately 1:00 PM in the afternoon, and I will commence the meeting. First order of business, of course, are the minutes from April 15th, 2021. I hope all the commissioners have had time to read those. And if not, we can take a moment. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair. This is Cory. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Bravender seconds it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you so much. And Sean, whomever we got on board? We have Cory as a board member and Patrick as a board member.
Correct.
And Dan and I in person. Well, I'd like to welcome everyone to this even, and also those who are perhaps calling in or watching on their computer. So, our first order of business today is Mr. John Tater. Sean?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission. This item received a recommendation to rezone to R1. The county board acted on that recommendation and has been rezoned. Existing house on the property and the concept plan at the rezoning.
They have the copy of the...
They have the copy. Oh, that's fine. And then the project 20168 is in your staff report. It probably is the last attachment showing all the professional survey soil information. We've received everything confirming that it meets all the R1 standards. So, it's a conditional use permit for the subdivision.
I see. Thank you, Sean. Mr. Tater, is there anything you'd like to add?
No.
Very well. Is there anyone from the public that might want to comment on this? The public hearing is still open, Sean?
Correct. Let me... I do not see anybody, but let me call for anybody. Is there anybody from the public that's joined via Teams that has public comment for our first item on the agenda? I think we're good.
Well, hearing none. The chair would entertain a motion from the board members if you're so inclined.
Just one question for the applicant. How on Lot 3, how is it going to be accessed on Lot 3? Is it going to be off of the...
It'll be off of 37.
37?
Yep, 37th Street.
And Lot 2 and Lot 1?
Lot 1 is off of 37th Street right now, and then the Lot 2 will be accessed from that bottom row.
Oh. So, it's just the Lot 2 that's going to be accessed from 36th Street, I guess it is?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other comments from the board members? All right, do we have a motion?
I'm prepared to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve a conditional use permit for a three-lot platted subdivision called Hidden Hillside Estates. The preliminary plot of Hidden Hillside Estates is approved in accord with the record of these hearings and the plans, terms, and specifications submitted by the applicant and completed by the Web Survey LLC dated 4/28/21, project number 20168, as subject to the following conditions. Number one, prior to the recording of the plot, the final plot checklist must be completed, including but not limited to the following. A, park dedication is paid along with the other fees noted on the plot checklist. B, title opinion is submitted and accepted by the county attorney. C, driveway approaches onto township roads, it should say, must be approved by the township. And two, any building or development proposed for any lot must include plans to show the preservation of proper services, drainage, and both a primary and secondary sewage treatment site. The zoning administrator may require that any significant change of the building location or land alteration on lots shall require review by the planning commission as an amendment to this plot approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Could I get names for the second one?
Oh, yes. Who seconded that, did that?
Cory did.
Cory. Okay, very well. And we will have a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Malmberg, then Cory, then myself, then Mr. Bravender.
Malmberg's an aye.
Tanner's an aye.
Felger, aye.
Bravender, aye.
Very well.
Dan Malt, aye.
Dan is in?
Dan got his call planned.
Yes, Dan Malt, aye.
Okay. Welcome, Dan.
I snuck in on ya.
Very well, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Tater. Best wishes to you.
Thank you.
And for those of you who are joining remotely, we'll take a moment here to sanitize the table and hold the other applicant in.
John Fritz, are you online? Are you hearing us?
Ah, yes, I am.
Yes, thank you. So, the applicant is online. We're ready for number two.
Okay, very well. Second agenda item today is Mr. John A. Fritz. Sean?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission. The property is zoned agriculture, and the land use plan is agriculture. Existing house and outbuildings, a previous gravel pit. The plan is to bring in topsoil material to level out the field, the low spots. The pictometry image for this year. Photo of the field. Essentially, some low undulating features and depressions that they want to fill in, level out. I will let Mr. Fritz describe the details and timing of his project.
Yeah, you know, another thing, too, is there's some sand, bad sand pockets there, and the property owner, I think, would like to rotate corn and beans through there. Right now, he's got it planted in El Felf or hay. It looks okay now, but it, there isn't much topsoil there. I have a couple of projects that I could start adding to that, so that's basically what we're trying to do. We're not trying to, I mean, there's not going to be a big berm or nothing. We're just going to kind of come across there, so, or like to come across there, so when he runs his digger through there, he's not down into the gravel stirring that all up.
Are you doing that project this year, John?
I would, you know, it's probably, that, it's probably going to take a bit to do it, maybe over a couple of years, you know? That would be the plan. But I'm not going to completely disturb the whole thing. I would just take a section. Okay, I have 3,000 yards or 2,000 yards out. I would just put it in one area, you know, and then re-probably put, reseed back over it or plant something in there when we're done. Just so we're not disturbing the whole entire property at one time.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, for the planning commission's reference, I don't have a map in front of me, but we had a Dwayne Ralstead petition a couple of years ago to do similar, to fill in a low area on a old gravel pit. And I believe we gave him a three-year time period to do it in phases for the same reason. Didn't have enough material to do it all at once, but when he did one part, he wanted to then seed it in and wait until he had enough material to do the second phase.
So, we have given similar applicants about a three-year or so timeframe to complete the project?
Correct, and it's sounding like that might match up with what this person is looking at doing.
Is that correct, Mr. Fritz? Did you hear that conversation?
Yes, yes, that sound, that would be, I think, ample time.
Okay, very well. Any of the board members have questions?
I have a question for Sean. Is this part of the original reclamation plan, or is this just, it's already been reclaimed and this is just extra?
Well, I guess my comment is it perhaps should have been part of the original reclamation plan. I think they got a little bit deeper than they had planned on and didn't get the topsoil even enough throughout the area. So, this is filling in the weak spots, and on top of that, bringing in more fill than would have been needed for the original reclamation.
Mr. Riley, would you mind stepping up to the photograph on the screen and pointing out there was a former gravel pit on that property? Is that my understanding?
Correct. So, in this area, there's a permit on, so I wanted to have a permit. I think we have issues with, but I'm not seeing what now is signed up.
That older one, was that brought up to any level of reclamation standards or not at that time, wasn't required?
Well, it was reclaimed to a minimal standard at that time, but it wasn't a conditional use permit, and I don't think the lay of the land there warrants dealing with the trees and existing improvements to do that.
Okay, very well. Are there any other board members that would have any questions? Well, I've got a question of Mr. Fritz. Where is this 10,000 yards of excess clean fill going to come from?
It's going to probably come off of a project in Watertown. There's a school over there that they're doing. Or it might see some material off the Highway 12 project up in Maple Lake, or Maple Plain.
Okay, very well. Now, are we to be insured, then, that that clean fill and topsoil will be of a clean nature?
Yep, everybody will have to sign a fill agreement, which basically states that's not, it holds whoever the contractor is as responsible, and it, we're not going to be hauling any contaminated, free-willing contaminated soil out there by any means.
Right, well, that's our main concern on that when it comes to fill.
Correct.
So, you would...
I don't...
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Fritz. Now, you want to bring in fill, which leads me to believe you would scrape away the current topsoil, if any, put in your fill, and then push back and bring in more clean fill or clean topsoil?
I would probably not scrape the topsoil off there. There is very little topsoil there. I would just add topsoil to what's there.
Okay, very well.
And if there was any fill, it would always get covered. Any, I'm not, more than likely, everything I'd haul in there would be topsoil.
Okay, very well. Thank you. Any other board members have questions before I bring it to the public? John, are there anyone from the public or in the audience here that are interested in speaking relative to this project proposal?
I don't see anybody. Is there anybody online wanting to speak to the John Fritz? The second request on the agenda.
And there's nobody in the room.
All right, very well. I'll bring it back up to the board.
I have no issues. I'm prepared to make a motion if we need...
Very well, Mr. Bravender.
I'd like to make a motion to approve approximately 10,000 yards of clean fill materials to be brought in to grade the previous mine site according to the plans and description provided to the applicant. Hours of operation limited from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and that this permit would continue for three years from today's date.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And that was Mr. Malmberg, was it?
Malt.
Oh, that was Malt.
Oh, okay. Having difficulty through these speakers here. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Bravender, Felger, Malt, Tanner, and Mr. Malmberg.
Bravender votes aye.
Felger votes aye.
Malt votes aye.
Tanner votes aye.
Malmberg's aye.
Very well, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Fritz, for your participation. Best wishes.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is Mr. Michael A. Strong. You are, Mr. Strong. Could you state your name and address for the secretary, please?
My name is Michael A. Strong. My address is 2187 30th Street Southeast in Buffalo.
Very well. If you feel comfortable, and if those in the rest of the room here, you can remove your mask while you're speaking into the microphone, and to, for the, in order for the commissioners and anyone else who has signed in online, you can direct your voice to that white microphone right there. Then they'll hear you off in the ether world. All right, Sean?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission. The property is in Rockford Township, zoned agriculture, and the land use plan is residential. Existing site with house and outbuildings. The applicant came in and requested a additional storage building, went down the route of the contractor's yard and needing to require, apply for a CUP, conditional use permit. Conducts a largely a lawn care business, so that is predominantly off-site, with the equipment and materials coming back to the property at day's end. I'll let the applicant describe the operation.
What is that?
I'll let you describe the details of your operation.
It's just a small lawn care company. All our work is off-site. We don't have any supplies or material that we bring home or anything. All of our equipment is in trailers, enclosed trailers, so it's kept clean. Yeah, just a basic lawn care company.
Okay, basically, no materials, no landscape, rocks, piles of debris. Okay.
No, we stick to maintenance.
Okay, very well, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant from the board members?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I was just curious, how many employees and vehicles do you have?
It's just me and my brother-in-law.
Okay.
And once in a while, we have some kids helping us once in a while, but it's mainly just me and my brother-in-law.
Okay.
Thanks.
This is Commissioner Malmberg. I have a question about, what is the property to the east?
To the east?
Just a second, Pat. As far as, do you like zoning, or...
Well, you know, we have a note in our, in our package, Sean, that talks about vegetation and screening potential. As I look at the aerial...
Yeah.
The property that's to the east, I'm just, I can't figure out what it is. It looks like it's some sort of, I don't know, contractor's yard with some storage up to the north, and I'm just trying to evaluate whether there's any need to talk about any sort of screening at all. It seems like they've got nice exposure to each other.
Yeah, I think that property has historically probably been in that condition. My opinion is, I think there's quite a few trees along that part of the property line, and I'm assuming the buildings will be facing or oriented either west or north.
Yeah.
Not towards that property line. Something we just wanted to bring to the planning commission's attention to see if you had any concerns.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Riley, you had mentioned that in the land use plan, it's designated as residential large lot. Would that mean ag res, 10 acre minimum?
It would mean in most cases, five acres potential, or a little bit smaller, but...
Okay.
Since the surrounding area is either zoned R1 or cut up, you know, developed...
Sure.
It probably be hard to utilize that land use designation.
Okay, very well, thank you. All right, did we ask if there's anyone from the public that wanted to speak on this?
I don't think we did. Is there anybody in, from the public that would like to speak to Michael Strong's conditional use permit request, item number three?
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Hearing none, let's bring it back up to the board. Anyone can make a motion.
This is Malmberg. I'll make a motion. Like to make a motion to approve a conditional use permit for a contractor's yard to look at a lawn care business on the applicant's homestead in accord with the plan, the site plan on file.
Tanner seconds.
We have a motion by Mr. Malmberg, and second by Mr. Tanner. We will vote in the following order, Mr. Malmberg, Tanner, Malt, Felger, Bravender.
Malmberg's aye.
Dan Malt is aye.
Tanner's aye.
Felger, aye.
Bravender, aye.
Motion passes. Best wishes to you, Mr. Strong.
Thank you, guys. Have a great day.
We'll take a moment here. All right, our next item on the agenda is Mr. Donovan DeMurray.
I'm Paul Otto with Otto Associates.
This is Donovan DeMurray. Address, my home address is 26175 Birch Bluff Road, Excelsior, Minnesota.
Thank you.
Gary, did you know Stacy checked down?
She's, yeah, I don't, maybe that's where she is now.
No public, Stacy? But not?
Somebody else.
Obviously, okay, thank you. Too much capacity, huh?
All right, Sean, item number four.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission. The properties are in Chatham Township and Marysville Township. I'm going to give you the basic layout because this pertains to both this item and the next item. The zoning is agriculture. The property in question for the next request is in the land use plan as AR. Overall, property has six entitlements.
Both properties combined, is that correct?
Correct, everything in blue. Correct, everything in blue. Well, the PIDs, right, so every, all, all the PIDs contained in blue. Has a total of six entitlements. Item number four is a request to cluster three of the entitlements in one location. That requires a conditional use permit from the Planning Commission. There's a certificate of survey on that cluster layout. I don't want to get ahead of ourselves to the next item. For the first part of the request is for a clustering. The one thing we do note in the staff report, it's, uh, there's entitlement contained on property in Marysville Township and the transferring. We notified both townships of the request. We're looking for input from, uh, Marysville. And then Chatham responded back, it's attached in the report, with, with a denial. Again, I don't want to get to the second part, the next item.
And this is on number four?
Yeah, item number four. Not clear if that response spoke to the next item.
I see.
At Adam Township.
So, to be clear now, where it says cluster area for three entitlements, those entitlements all are from that one piece adjoining the lake, is that?
There would be two here and then the remainder on the rest of the parcel. Well, they're contiguous.
Do you take into consideration whether they're continuous, contiguous, if you are pondering the cluster?
We, we take into consideration if you're doing a transfer. So, so if it's contiguous, we can administratively allow for the movement.
And that can cross township lines?
In that case, it can. When it's not contiguous and it requires a CUP for the transfer, then it needs to be in the same township.
I see, okay.
So, in this instance, if it wasn't for the cluster, in, in theory, entitlements could be transferred to the commonly owned contiguous land. In this case, because of the transfer, it's resulting in cluster CUP or a cluster CUP.
And there will be how many remaining entitlements?
There will be three left.
Three left to use?
Three left.
Three left to?
Well, because of the second part of the request, whatever entitlements are left would default the remainder of the property that would stay zoned agriculture.
All right. Would the applicant or his representative care to, uh, explain what you would intend on doing here?
Sure, it's, uh, pretty straightforward, Mr. Chair. I think Mr. Riley explained it pretty well. Um, yeah, you're, you're, we're bringing one entitlement over from the south parcel to the north parcel. Um, the other three, we're planning to keep on the south in Marysville Township. Um, we clustered them in this corner because that's kind of the best shoreline on the property. And it's probably the best building sites. This lake would have a 200-foot setback. And these lots are about four acres, just so you're kind of knowing what you're looking at as far as the clustering of these. But they do meet the requirements for a four-acre parcel, so. Not a whole lot more on that part of it unless you have questions. Thanks.
All right, are there any other board members that have questions of the applicant? Or his representative? Well, hearing none, um, are there anyone, is there anyone here from the public that would wish to speak to this issue? Ma'am, would you care to step up to the podium, address the, your, excuse me? Say to name an address and address your comments into the microphone here, the white one? Either way.
Okay. Hi, I'm Ann Smith. I own the property just north of, well.
Way up there, okay.
663 Byce Avenue.
I'm sorry, ma'am, what was your name?
Ann Smith.
Ann Smith, thank you.
I was just wondering, I didn't make all the township meetings, so I came to this meeting to try to find out what they plan on doing, because there are a lot of wetlands along there and creeks and stuff like that. And that's, I see, I, I don't know for sure what all you guys do, but I was just wondering to know, how many properties are they planning on putting on this? I mean, eventually.
Well, I think the current plan, excuse me if I'm wrong, is that they're wishing to do three lots just in that one little box next to that.
Just this area right here? That, that's it.
Well, that's this item for, for the, for the cluster, for the cluster. The second part you got notified on is to rezone this portion to a residential, residential classification that allows more lots. So on the next item, we're going to discuss doing lots on that part of the, that part of the property.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Sean, is there anyone out in the ether that would care to comment on this?
Is there anybody online that would like to speak to the DeMurray request, item four on the agenda?
Well, hearing, hearing none, we'll bring it back up here. Any comments?
I would like to make a motion that we do a site inspection.
A site inspection. Okay, we have a motion for a site inspection. Is there a second?
Tanner votes aye, or the second, sorry.
Mr. Tanner, is my understanding you seconded the motion?
Yeah.
Very well. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
If included in that motion, it would be tabled until the next meeting.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Tanner?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, very well. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I forget which way I went last time in terms of the voting. We'll start with Dan Bravender and go down the line.
Bravender votes aye.
Felger votes aye.
Tanner votes aye.
Dan Moll votes aye.
Malmberg votes aye.
All right. You understand how that works here now? We're going to come out to the site. And those who in the public or listening in online would care to know when that site inspection will occur, you're certainly welcome to show up in person. We will not take any testimony from individuals that show up. We're just, as a board, trying to get an idea what the lay of the land looks like and will help in our ultimate decision here. So, if you want to know when that occurs.
And then they continue to, is June 6th or 3rd, June 3rd? That's the next meeting?
The next meeting is?
Will you continue to the next meeting, so June 3rd?
Correct.
So, we'll, we'll have to decide at the end of this meeting prior to June 3rd when our site inspection will be. Ma'am, do you understand that? Okay, very well. All right. Guess we're on our way. We'll move on to item number five.
Same people.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Waiting for you.
I was, sure. I'm sorry, you're way ahead of me. Mr. Chair of Planning Commission, this property is in Chatham Township, zoned agriculture. It's in the land use plan as ag residential. Obviously, the cluster was here. Remaining, remainder of the property is the rezoning request. Concept plan on the layout where you can start seeing and discussing woods and the natural features and the topography and a drainage course. Got the, the response from Chatham Township that was headed on the cluster. Don't have complete forms for both items, but at this time, information we've received that that township responds to both parts of the request. But an applicant obviously would be allowed, uh,
So there's some discrepancy there with the responses from the township?
From a formal standpoint on, on, on paper.
Okay.
If this item are also continued for the site inspection under the cluster, uh, applicant and owner, of course, can revisit, clarify with the, with the township.
Okay, very well. Uh, Mr. Otto and Mr. DeMurray, have you met with township on both issues?
Um, so yes, Mr. Chair, we, yes and no. Um, we have met with Chatham Township. This was all presented as one item or talked about as one and together. We didn't separate it like we did today. Chatham Township, uh, I mean, I guess it should be noted, one of the board members happens to live across the street. So, he was, he was a no. It's a board of three. It was a two-to-one vote. We discussed it a little bit and their comment, their con, they, they didn't make a formal motion, so that's why you have a little bit of the confusion. Their comment was, we just don't want more houses. So, you have to take that for what it is. We can go back and talk to them, but I don't know that their minds will change as we move forward. My argument back to them was that this property is in the land use plan along with a lot of properties around it. And then they have actually also rezoned a number of properties around it. Um, there's, there's one to the north that was four lots that was in probably the last five years. There's a property on Byce that was rezoned, probably within the last 10 years that I'm aware of. That, you know, there's a property, it's in Marysville Township on the south side of Birch Lake. But if you look at that map, those are your properties that are rezoned already. And then if you go to the, Sean, can you go to the land use plan? You'll notice that this whole area is all slated for residential lots. So, I guess if it wasn't supposed to be in the plan and the traffic is too much for it, I don't, I don't, I don't really understand their comment, I guess, put it that way. I didn't agree with it, but it's not my call. Just as a reminder, we could be looking at a PUD and going with more lots that are smaller. We felt that 10-acre lots fit this property better, was more consistent with the neighborhood. Uh, it's better for the shoreland. We can work around some of the drainage swales better. All of our lots are 10 acres to the ordinary high water level. And then some of them are even larger than that just because of wetlands and lowlands. And you'll note the odd configuration on our concept plan. That was purposeful, basically trying to keep most of the woods in one lot and, and kind of keeping the creek within one lot as well. So that essentially one property owner kind of becomes the steward of that, of that creek. That is really the only lot that we'll be able to build in the woods. The other properties, there's a, it's a natural environment lake, so there's a 200-foot setback. So, most of the other properties are going to be out in the field where they can build. They may be infringing on the edge of that, but you'll kind of see that if, if you are coming out. I'm assuming that where this is going is you're going to come out and look at it, but you'll kind of see that when you come out. That woods along the shoreline is a pretty nice woods, so, um, that will be protected for the most part. But to answer your question, we did not visit with Marysville Township. And Marysville wouldn't have needed to discuss on this item, but we did not visit them on the other item. Some confusion on my part that, uh, that we had to visit them for transferring the entitlement. I thought that that would, could be done administratively. And, uh, so we can certainly visit with Marysville Township if this board wishes, so. I don't know that I have a whole lot else. I can certainly take questions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a question for Mr. Otto. The lot to the north then, is that, that's all one lot then on that north side there?
Yes, there's, there's 10 acres of buildable, so 10 acres above the lake. And then there's 24 acres that's essentially lake swamp.
To the west there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we included that all in that lot. It's, there's a little bit of usable land out there in the middle, but I, you can't really get to it other than maybe wintertime.
All right, so, are you done, Mr. Brad, uh, Mr. Otto? Uh, lot one then, proposed building site would be to the east end of lot one, is that correct? Is that an open field?
Yeah, I would suspect it's going to be somewhere near the tree line on the west side to try and take advantage of a view, views of the lake.
Even though, abiding by the 200-foot setback?
Yeah, the 200 setback.
Oh, you're well within that by the dimension, I see.
Well, the, um, the lake is actually pretty close to the angle point in that lot. So if you imagine 200 feet back from there, they're going to be on the edge of that field. They wouldn't be able to build right in the middle of that woods on lot one.
Okay, now on lots, let's say, uh, two, three, four, five, has the lake, has the lake expanded to the east at all, uh, the shoreline?
The lake, the elevation of the, of the lake, the ordinary high water level follows pretty close to what you see as woods on that map.
Okay.
So where you see the cattails or the lighter color, that, that's part of the lake, yeah.
Expanded, okay.
So it's, it's a, pretty close to the edge of that, that woods.
All right. Okay, I asked anyone here in the audience that wanted to speak, the lady back there did. Is there anyone online, Sean?
Is there anybody online that would like to speak to item number five, the Donovan DeMurray request?
Hearing none, I guess we'll bring it back up to the board unless the board has any further questions.
She want to speak to this one?
Uh, ma'am, go ahead. Come on back up if you wanted to speak.
I guess I really knew that this was coming. I've lived out there for 47 years, but, um, I don't want it to come, but I don't have a choice.
But to answer your question.
Yes.
Earlier.
So, this is.
It'd be lots one, lot two?
Lots one, see, that's just on the edge of my property, so I don't know how close that house could be to. So you said you were going to make it about right, right there, right? In the building section?
I would, I would expect that that home is going to be somewhere probably the middle of that lot at about that westerly tree line in that vicinity. If, just, if I was looking at where I would build, that's kind of where I would build. So back at the back of that field, near the tree line, kind of in the middle.
You're talking right there? Or over there?
No, that's swamp, so it'd be, it'd be in the field that you can see from the road.
Off just to the left of the, oh, right there.
That was a good way to explain it.
Sort of in between the. Probably, probably between the one and the tree line there, that's the eastern side of it. Yeah, so well off the road.
Probably 100, 120 feet from the north property line.
That would be my guess, now that the setback is only 30.
I know, but, right, so that description would be well off that line. But if the question is how close could somebody get, it'd be 30 feet. But on that big of a lot, people usually don't want to pinch right up against the neighboring.
And, and I think it's going to be emblematic of all of the future residents of these lots, pushing as far off of Byce to the west as possible, so long drives, coming, tucking as close to the tree line as possible. So on that one that's closest to you, ma'am, like I said, between the number one and the tree line, is the likely spot that someone would place a home there.
Well, that's for information, because my daughter was going to build on her lot, which is going to be just part of the area. Don't want to be looking in your neighbor's toilet, so. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. The first request, where does that reside next to this proposal?
One, two, three. So three lots as a result of the request on the cluster because of entitlement staying ag.
Right.
And then four lots.
Oh, okay, I thought that was another lot.
It, it looks that way, but that would be, that's the cluster lot.
Now I'm clear.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any further questions from the board members? We will bring it back up to the board then.
Mr. Chair, there's a motion for a site inspection on this one.
Very well, there's a motion for a site inspection for this property or this, uh, Very well, there's a motion for a site inspection for this property or this petition as well. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And your name was? Was that Mr. Moenberg?
You can have it, Dan. Mall. Dan Mall.
Oh, Dan Mall. I keep getting you confused with-
I think we're history people.
Mr. Moenberg. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, let's start on Mr. Moenberg's end of the table here.
Moenberg, aye.
Dan Mall, aye.
Corey Tanner, aye.
Felger, aye.
Reverend, aye.
And that was to continue as well, correct?
To the next, to the June request.
Very well, motion passes, we'll see you out there. You will be notified as to when that site inspection will occur, so all are welcome.
Appreciate your consideration, thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll take a moment here to clean up. Put my cell phone on airplane mode.
So Sean, I noticed that in the notes, Maryville wanted time to meet with the applicants. I don't know if that's going to happen, if they're going to have a meeting before then?
Yeah, they were, last Monday of the month.
Last Monday?
But they lost them, changed it because of Memorial Day to another date.
I'm not sure.
We can check with them then.
That was in the staff notes, and I come to item 4.
Yeah, we should let the applicant know, because they probably changed the date because of the holiday.
Mr. Riley and the board members, I'm going to take a five-minute chairman's break here.
We are taking a five-minute chairman's break.
Just said Marysville's requesting the island be tabled for the applicant. Yeah, I think they're the fourth Monday of the month, Monday or Tuesday.
Are you the applicant for the-
Or until Tuesday, they might mean.
We're taking a five-minute chairman's break.
Okay.
My son, Adam. Oh, really? He's raining really bad. Also there up north. This on his own land or for turning? Yep. Nice experience, nice experiences, huh? Just to do this. No, it's not. Your population has to be correct.
It has to be perfect.
Because you're mat, you're populating a male parent, not a female parent. Pretty detailed about it, timing is important, too. Oh, that happens already.
Probably harder on the 20 acre.
Yep.
That's just a matter-
Yeah, that's pretty small. Been moving along pretty good then? Sean, so far so good, moving along pretty good?
Maybe.
Yeah.
Going real quick, actually.
Is it? Tony. Good, can I call you right back? I'm actually in a commission meeting, and they're on, they're on break, but I'm just, I get this, so I'll hang up. Thanks. Is this area-
This is current.
In here or what?
Just resoning them, right?
All right, we are back from our break. Mr. Riley? We have the Anthony, Rieger, Riger?
Rieger, Boer, yep.
Anthony Rieger, Boer. And you've already stated your names and addresses to the secretary?
No.
No.
Okay.
That's who we should do.
Would you please?
Anthony Rieger, Boer, 11988 Jarvis Avenue Northwest, Anandale 55302. What else?
Sure.
Adam Rieger, Boer.
Give your address, please.
16326 Irvine Avenue, Clearwater, Minnesota, 55320.
Thank you, gentlemen. Sean, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, planning commission, the property is in Corinna Township. The zoning is general agriculture. It's in the land use plan as agriculture. The green you can see surrounding is public, are public lands. The property does not have any more entitlements on it. It's one per 40. The request is to rezone plus or minus 10 acres of this portion of the property to AR to allow for other home site on the property, the 10-acre lot.
Remind you to understand that the entitlement is already used up and-
Correct.
Under today's standards.
Correct.
Okay, very well. Thank you. And, oh, I'm sorry, and what is it guided toward on the land use plan, Sean?
Agriculture.
It's zoned ag now and guided toward ag.
Correct.
Very well, thank you. Sir, would you like to state your case?
Yeah, I mean, he stated it, that's what we want. We're looking to, just looking to get a building site, not really, doesn't matter to us how we, how it's configured, this is just the way we decided to do it. Because of the wetland there, we decided to encompass that piece in there, but we're just looking for a building spot for our son, starting family, and wants to stay in the Anandale area, and so we chose to do it this way, break off that piece, because that was the old site, or the original farmhouse was down there in the corner with the sheds, so, and then you have the wetland, so that would just take it all out, and then that would leave the rest of it so that we could put it into a permanent easement through the land trust and preserve that. And I know, you know, my thinking on that is, you know, we were asking for a get here that's off the plan, so what we'd want to do is a give, and our give would be that the remaining 30 acres would be put into a perpetual easement with the land trust. And we owned a prairie restoration company on there at one time, so it's all been restored, it has some threatened species on there, and so it's, to me, it's of value to just make sure this is a preserved spot. But before I do that, I want to make sure that at least one of my kids can build and stay in the area, so. It's really the motive behind all of it, it's, there's no development plans here or anything like that.
I see. Now, sir, did I detect some buildings up in the far northeast corner?
Far north, no, southwest corner. Well, yeah, the northeast is my house, that's my existing house, yes. The northeast corner is my existing-
What's up there?
That's our log home with detached garage.
So that's the home.
Yep, and down in the, where the buildings are, in the southwest corner, you can see the tops of the sheds down there.
And the old farmhouse?
That's, no, it's not there, that's been demolished and taken out, but the buildings are still there. That's where we, when we bought the land, that was the house that we lived in, built up there, tore that down, and like I said, just trying to find a way to block off a piece of land for Adam here. And the configuration was really strictly because it just kind of encompassed, if I'm going to put it in the land trust, I just took out that wetland and those buildings.
Now, what areas would you put into the trust, as you said?
It would include the, I would have an exclusion for the house up there with the land trust. I don't know if you know much about the land trust and how they do their stuff, but you would, they would come in with a covenant, a legal covenant that holds it in perpetuity, and they monitor the site, but in the covenant, it basically says, you know, they, the land stays as it is, including the way the house and the garage is on there, and that stays as it is, but there'll be no development further, and you can write into the covenant, no development, no tilling of the soil even if I want, because I don't want the prairie to be upset. So you can write it any way you want, and that's how I would write it, to preserve the land as it is and to keep managing it as a prairie community, plant community.
And that's in the perpetuity?
In perpetuity, forever, whatever that means in this world, but-
Forever.
Yeah, means forever. But really, what does that mean? But it, but there is no other organization that does that as well as the land trust, the national organization, but they're one for every state. Minnesota uses the Minnesota Land Trust, and they have people that monitor and make sure that the covenants are kept up and stand on.
Sean, is that your understanding of how that works, or is it not even to be brought up at this juncture?
I would hate to speak to details on that. That's well beyond my realm.
Very well, I guess then that just sounds like my more curiosity as to what it is.
Guys, this is Pat, can you hear me?
Yes, Pat.
He has generally described what the land trust would do with it correctly.
Very well.
I would have came more prepared with the information with the land trust, too, but I didn't, when I talked to Sean, he made it sound as if this is, that's kind of a separate consideration.
It is.
I just wanted you to know, that's how, that's my give, you know, on this, and I realize this is not something that's in the plan, so I have to, I have to give, and that's my give. And I was planning on doing it anyways, so it's the give that I would for sure do if we got this done.
I get you.
Yeah.
Okay, very well, are there any other questions of the applicant or Sean at this point in time from the board members?
I guess I have one comment, Mr. Chair. I realize that as far as the hopscotch zoning, that that's not something that's allowed in the state of Minnesota, but, and in Wright County, but I'm looking at the land and what's between, that'd be the east side, I believe.
Yes, conics.
Yeah, and just directly to the east of the DNR land, it is zoned ag residential, right, Sean?
It is, yes.
And that's the only comment I would make, that there is no way that this is going to ever, it could possibly connect to the other ag residential because of the DNR land between it.
Thank you for bringing that up.
And that is a public road on the west side of this property?
It is, it's Jarvis Avenue.
Jarvis, okay. Any other questions from the board members for the gentleman? All right, we will bring it to the public if there's anyone that would, in the audience that would like to speak. Ma'am, would you care to come up first? Please stand up here and state your name and address, please. And if you could, ma'am, direct your voice toward the white microphone.
That one?
That's the one that goes out to-
So not this one?
No.
So you want me to come out?
Either way, you can stand where you are or-
Speak towards, speak towards the chair.
Please state your name and address, ma'am.
I have a terrible voice, anyway. But they've always been our neighbors.
Did you state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary LaFave.
LaFave, okay.
Address is 12405 Jarvis Avenue Northwest, Anandale, Minnesota, 55302.
Thank you, ma'am.
So they've always been our neighbors, and, you know, I grew up at the place we're on, the farm that we're on, and we are still farming it, and land in our neighborhood, and we've got other neighbors that farm here. And we have always understood that planning and zoning is for a reason, that you look over land use and you see agriculture, you see where residential works well. And we don't have any problems with people that have land entitlements that were to build on their properties. My problem is, this case in particular, is that once the word res, residential is brought in, it can be taken out. And I know he's putting that in a permanent, across the rest of his land, but you don't know how somebody else is going to come in on the road. And will that be used as, used by somebody else to come in and say, well, here's their situation, ours is somewhat similar, and because it puts a crack in that agricultural land use, that we don't have anything else. But there's future board members, all that see an opportunity, it's like, okay, well they did residential, we can get our foot in the door with this. And we lived in Onsego back when it was all farmland, and we farmed. And we lived through what happened little by little. And with farming, it carries so many challenges with it to begin with, that the more people that can, and not saying anything about, to your add-on, but future people that could come in, the restrictions start to mount, it becomes very burdensome to the farmer's livelihood that for long, things are being taken away. Farmers' rights to be able to haul manure down the road, whether it's, you have to send out a letter when you want to spread manure, you can't farm at night, the noise and the lights are too loud, and haul your grain, you might have to get to the, down to the cities early in the morning, but the noise from the trucks is a burden to people. Assessment from roadwork that they want, as things get built up. And so to have the word residential brought in, something that is zoned agriculture, and once you do it, it's done. It's changed.
Ms. Jarvis, could you point out on the map where you're currently farming?
Okay, um, so is this-
Up to the left, up to the left.
This is Jarvis, right? That's our farm right there.
Yep, right there.
Yes. And my son's place is right this north of us, that one. And then he bought that whole property right up above the 40. Not that one, one more, up north, that one. Not the house and the building, but the land. He rents that piece of the tree and then he burned that hole. And behind us is CRP, there's a property that was taken out of CRP that he's renting and above a further corner. There's a property that was taken out of CRP that he's renting, and above that further corner here, that came out of CRP, so that's all farmed. And I know Jim Durkis here farms right down all of this. And this piece is put in CRP, and that was farmed forever. All this is farmed on 24. Farmed to the north on the other side, 247. Pretty much up and down 24 is, no, all farmed.
Okay.
The person that did, who sold that to my son, they went to Clearwater Township, uh, just last fall, I believe. They wanted to put it in houses. They had cattle and raised hay, and they were told to help in the agriculture. But he wanted most of all.
Well, thank you. Anything else, Ms. Jarvis?
Probably is, but I forgot it.
Very well, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else from the public that would like to comment? Yes, ma'am. You know the routine, uh...
Yeah, I'm Loretta Peterson.
Mr. Chair?
And I'm at 9430 120th Street Northwest, Annandale, 55302.
Okay, ma'am, ma'am.
I think there. Isn't that me?
Ma'am?
Yeah, you are right.
Would you excuse me just for a moment? I had one of the commissioners trying to comment.
Hold on one second, Loretta. One moment.
Who is trying to get in a comment? Board members? Maybe I was hearing things.
No, I heard it, I heard it, I heard it.
Please proceed.
Hi, um, I'm, I'm here because I, I fear growth. It's coming so intensely from Metro and whatever, and I guess my thing is, if you allow switching of zoning, where does it stop? Once, once the argument is given that you can switch from ag to ag residential, residential, the next person wants to do it too. And I have seventy-six point six eight, but we wanna keep it. It's right now in Seago. We love the land. Have nothing against them personally. I understand that would be nice if it's done good, but I just fear the growth. And the way you see things now with everyone trying to gobble up land, kind of, it, that's my fear. So that's all I have to say to the board. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, ma'am, so much. Is there anyone else that would like to comment, sir?
Mr. Chair?
I'm 115th Street Northwest, Annandale, 55302. I'd just like to, uh, I think a few comments on it. I live there since nineteen seventy-two, and everybody knows when you move to a place that's ag, that's what you grow there for. It's stayed.
Jim?
Yeah, thank you. But no, the only concern I got is that if we start changing on the ag land, pretty soon there's, there's not gonna be enough. And all the people that farm up there are always looking for land. But, uh, you know, buy, buy something that's zoned ag, it's stayed. Everybody around me is ag, ag-related. Don't see any reason to change anything. But you get on the other side of that, and it's all houses. Pretty soon that, you know, that's, people are everywhere else. They're looking, oh, there's nothing else going on somewhere. Hey, I, 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 you know, I'm his neighbor, but, uh, this, this, a couple of years ago, Marty put all kinds of hoses in there. Are they gonna put a flint hose in there? It's ag, it's stayed. You guys, you guys see that?
So, Mr. Durkis, you farm that land just west of the applicant's property? About a hundred and sixty, you're told?
Forty.
Forty. Very good. Anything else, sir?
Uh, no, I'm just, uh, just, uh, just, uh...
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Is there anyone else, ma'am?
I would like to make a comment if, uh, you can hear me.
Will you have someone on the phone?
A second.
Yeah.
Uh, go ahead, sir, I can hear you. State your name and address, please.
I'm having a hard time hearing a little bit, uh, are you talking, uh, are you talking to me?
Yes, can you state your name and address, please?
Okay, yeah, this is Marty LaFave, and the address is 12481 Jarvis Avenue Northwest, Annandale.
You can make your comments.
Okay, and, uh, yeah, I just wanted to kind of reiterate a little bit, uh, to like, like they were saying, you know, I have no problem with, with Tony and they're good neighbors and stuff, but it, it really comes down to, uh, why we pull is just because of the rezoning. You know, and we, you know, we have, uh, the land use plan kind of in place, you know, kind of for a reason where, you know, we're gonna, we kind of know, you know, the county knows this, everybody knows that there's gonna be some growth, but, you know, we, uh, I believe the county's gotta be kind of careful how they go about this growth. That's where the plan comes in. There, there needs to be a balance, I believe. You know, we're gonna have some growth, but yet, you know, my livelihood is agriculture along with a lot of other people, so I feel that we need to preserve that as well. And, uh, you know, when, when you start rezoning, you know, agriculture land that's not in the land use plan to agres, I feel it's just, it's a slippery slope that, uh, you know, other people down the road are gonna come with this, you know, other reasons. You know, Tony's kind of got a, you know, a little bit of a, a different, uh, situation there where what he's trying to do, you know, is put it in the land trust, which is, which is unique, um, but, but every, you know, other people in the future might think their unique, uh, idea, idea is unique as well. Well, you should let us do, do that as well. But, uh, I just kind of feel that, uh, you know, we kind of need, uh, really gotta be careful, uh, what we start to do here, so, um, I guess that, uh, and I wanted to, you know, my mom brought that up as well, as far as the property, the north up the road, they, they wanted to rezone agres just last year, and, and the town, Clearwater Township turned them down. So I think there's, you know, there should be some consistency with that as well, so, um, that's all I have to say, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaFave. All right, ma'am.
Um, I'm Danielle LaFave, 12481 Jarvis Avenue Northwest, Annandale. Um, I'm pretty much piggybacking on like what my mother-in-law said and my husband said. I don't know you personally, 'cause I haven't personally met you guys really.
Yeah.
Um, I know, like, my family obviously knows you. Uh, it has nothing to do personally. It's, I have always kind of grown up understanding planning and zoning and, uh, because of my dad and stuff, and I'm kind of in the same boat of if it was already zoned, you know, and they had a building entitlement already on that property, I'd have no problem with it. But when you start to switch those things, it does just set up that pathway for people to do it in the future. And I'm not talking like two years from now or three years from now. I plan on living at my home till I'm old and gray and dying there. So I don't wanna be twenty years down the road and have a different, out from different areas, 'cause a lot of people are liking Annandale, like me, fully, like Clearwater, because getting out of that city area. But now other homeowners are wanting to rezone their properties to build other homes, and the development is gonna come in. And my husband's livelihood is farming, and he has our sole income. And when you start building up with ag residential in our area, especially close to our home, if it starts to break that crap and more people are zoning that way, we could end up with tar roads and regulations with hauling manure and driving tractors with weight limits and hauling grain, and then we have not only our trucks, my mother-in-law's trucks next to us, um, our new neighbors just down the road that bought the property from us as well. They also drive trucks, and then you could have noise issues. I just think it's, like everybody said, a very slip, very slope. You start with one person doing it, good intentions, good reasons, which I do feel are great, but then it opens the door for a lot of other people to do the same. Um, the other thing I had just kind of thought of is I just don't know how it's also gonna affect people, 'cause the land right around here, people hunt in, and that might also potentially, people that like to hunt in our area may not be able to shoot as close or have a little more restriction that way too, and that might be a consideration as well. And all I have.
Well, thank you, Mrs. LaFave. Anyone else? I think we've covered all the members in the room here. Anyone online yet?
Is there anybody else online that wants to speak to the last item on the agenda?
Hearing none. Sir, would you like to respond to some of those comments?
I guess by, I don't know how much weight it holds, because it's not part of the consideration, legal considerations, the, the trust, um, putting it into the land trust, I don't know. But I can't help but state it that, you know, all the other pieces of land that were talked about where people live, none of those are protected, and, and they could all change as time goes on, depending on planning commission changes, depending on, on, um, you know, the whims of the, of the folks, so. Um, but mine would be exactly the way it is. So I'm, I'm ensuring that by putting it into the land trust. So whatever, whatever vistas that are, that we have from our property will stay as they are. Um, and then one other note, Jim and I, uh, Jim mentioned that I was gonna build homes years ago, and, and I can see where the confusion would have been, but it wasn't, I wasn't gonna build homes. What I had done back then was my first attempt at trying to separate a piece. I have three children, and I was, I pulled apart, I think it was essentially the same ten acres, and I divided it in thirds, and I was hoping that someday I could give each one of my kids, uh, a piece of, uh, of our property. And, uh, if not, they would sell, I'd have a covenant that they would sell to the other, if they didn't ever use it. So it would be only within the family. But that, again, isn't anything I could, I could speak to in the meeting. It was all about just dividing land, and so it looked like I was dividing land, but I was never gonna build homes in my, I, I have no intention of building. I, I don't see any neighbors from where I'm at, and I, and unfortunately, you know, my son wants to put a house where I could see it, but that's, that's what happens, we didn't have a family, so. No, that, hopefully I answered Jim's, and, um, yeah, I don't know what to say more about the, the trust other than, you know, I'm the only one that you, you know, that's probably ever approached you that's saying, I will give you something for this get, and that is perpetual. My land will stay in its, in perpetuity under a covenant. I don't know how that works with going forward, but I guess that's all I can say.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, um, I guess we bring it back up to the board here. Is there any question?
Mr. Chair, this is Dan Moll.
Yes, Mr. Mollberg. Or is that Moll?
Dan Moll.
Dan Moll.
This is Dan.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Um, I live out there in that area, and I think we have to, you know, listening to Commissioner Bravender and his statement, Sugar Lake is to the east and Bass Lake is to the west, and there is some development around those lakes. But up in that area and up and down that corridor, Highway twenty-five, that is agricultural land. And I think to be rezoning this when it's not in the land use plan to do so is something we have to be very careful with as a board. And also, this property is agricultural, and it's surrounded by wildlife area. So to turn it into a residential area with hunters and that type of thing, I don't know if that's a correct thing to do. And we've had it before, when we, uh, have changed things or given people things, and they say it's for family, but then five or ten years, things change, things happen, and it's no longer, you know, what was intended when it was done. We have to look at the, the big picture and look what the county itself is doing in our ordinance, and this isn't in our ordinance to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moll. Anyone else have a comment? Hearing none? Do we have a...
Well, I'm sorry, sorry, uh, Mr. Felger, this is, this is Pat Mollberg this time.
Okay, the real Pat Mollberg. Welcome.
Well, I wish, I wish I were Dan Moll, but I'm not still blessed. Uh... Yeah. Yeah, so I, I, you know, I echoed the sentiment, um, that I'm hearing from, from Mr. Chair, uh, Moll there. Also, um, often voiced a similar, uh, sentiment that a lot of the folks that have spoke there today voiced, but I, I do have trouble, um, I don't know, I have trouble figuring out where this board is, is at oftentimes, because we do so often make exceptions, and former, uh, former member Burrell, um, had a, had an impression where if all we're here to do is say yes or no, it fits the plan or it doesn't, then why are we here at all? I, I, I'm not changing my sentiment, but I've driven this road lots and lots of times with my kids going out looking for deer. And I, I just wonder whether it's worth going to look at. The test we have to, to try and figure out is whether it's a rare and unique circumstance. I don't know that I give a lot to the idea of the land trust, so I, it's, it's an admirable, admirable move. Um, I'm more, I guess, interested in what the, the layout of the property is relative to the surrounding areas, given the, the topography there where that wetland is. Uh, it, it may just be worth a look, is, is all I really wanna say.
Are you suggesting, Mr. Mollberg, we have a site inspection?
I'm not, I'm not asking for one, Mr. Felger. Uh, I'm planting a seed if others are interested.
Mr. Chair, I'll...
I can, I can go without it, but having been at, past this property as many times as I have, may, maybe there's something to see there.
Very well.
Did it pass my time?
I'm gonna make a motion that we do a site inspection.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for a site inspection. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chair, this is Cory.
Yes.
Oh, I'll second that, and, um, you know, being from Onsego, I don't get up that way very often, so it would be, uh, I think, really good to get out there for me. Just, and I, I agree with Pat, what he's saying, um, it may, it may be a really unique situation, so.
Very well. You second it then? And...
Yeah.
And, and Mr. Tanner, the maker of the motion is suggesting we also continue it to the June third meeting. Is that acceptable to you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Very well, thank you. Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Bravender?
Bravender votes aye.
Felger votes aye.
Dan votes aye.
Tanner votes aye.
Mollberg votes aye.
Okay, we have a site inspection. And sir, and, uh, members of the audience, we will be setting a site inspection date and time. So if you wanna stick around, you can, otherwise, if you wish to find out when that is, you can certainly call the Planning and Zoning Office. And sir, did you have a comment?
Well, I did, yeah, I guess it's kind of past that, but I was just gonna say that, um, this, you know, it, I know it's hard for you to lash a land trust with any kind of decisions you make, but if you guys think about it, that's a good precedent to set, to set. If maybe that was something that you did, did do, and, and people that wanted an exception, and they did have to lash it to preserving in perpetuity their land, what a way to preserve the la, the landscape, and get, and, and people can get their, a new hole on their property or something like that. So I just wanted to make sure that that's a pres, that's a good precedent, not a bad.
Your point is well taken. Thank you. All right, well, that kind of concludes our business in terms of the agenda items, except I think we have to, uh... except I think we have to, uh, well, we can sign a plat for Francis.
Let's make a motion to approve the chair, or in this case, co-chair, for the planning commission to accept the Franklin Woods plat and to sign it.
You need a motion for that.
Did you make a mo, we finished, you made the motion?
We're done with the applicants here, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time.
And thank you, everyone in the audience knows that called in. I'm just going to take a brief moment here if you could.
You can sit and wait or they're just going to take care of the motion. They can see the date, they'll talk about it. Otherwise, we'll notify you either way.
Did I call you by the wrong last name?
Stay on, guys. We're going to make a motion to, uh,
Did you call me Mrs. Jarvis, I want to say? That's fine.
Oh, because I, okay.
I, we were playing at Jarvis Avenue at that point.
Okay, you're Mrs. LaFaye.
Yes, yes. I'm the original Mrs. LaFaye.
Very good. Thank you. Sorry about that.
No, 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 that's fine.
I'm sorry, Sean.
Can I just ask you guys? So would you, there's this, what were you asked to approve at the end?
Oh, this is something else.
Another item.
Another agenda item.
Okay, because I thought we moved to something else, so.
Nothing to do with this.
I have a random question because I'm like just thinking.
Can we, just a second. We need to finish up an order of business first. And then, just a second. So we need a motion to approve the planning commission's acceptance of the Franklin Woods plat and for the chair, in this case, the co-chair, to sign the plat.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Very well. We have a motion to sign a plat today. Is there a second?
Mollberg seconded it.
Very well. Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, Mr. Mollberg?
Aye.
Mr. Tanner?
Aye, sorry. I'm trying to hit my phone.
Dan, aye.
Felger, yes? Mr. Bravender?
Bravender, aye.
Okay. Oh, by the way, Dan, this will be my first opportunity to sign a plat.
He's going to sign your name.
Yeah. Okay, motion passes. Let's see, we've got to set a date?
For a site inspection.
Date for a site inspection. Sean, I presume we'll be doing both of those sites on the same day?
Correct.
The D-Murray and as, as well as this.
Can you hang on, Greg, too?
So if the board members could please check their upcoming calendar? What have we got going? Any suggestions? It'll have to be before the next meeting, which is June 3rd. Great, Terry?
Correct. June 3rd is the next meeting.
The later in the month would be better for me.
How about the 31st?
Sounds good to me. Cory?
That's Memorial Day.
Yeah, that's the holiday, right?
Yes. Yes, it is.
The 31st. Okay.
I asked Greg, he said it was okay.
Any suggestions, board members? Mr. Mollberg, you were saying later in the month. I cannot do it.
Miss, Chairman Moll was saying that.
Oh, Chairman, was that Chairman Moll?
24th AM, how about that?
24th, that's a Monday. AM?
AM.
Yes.
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 Yep.
Yes. Bravender's okay, Felger's okay, Moll's okay, Tanner's okay. Mollberg?
Uh, yeah, I, I could be, we're probably going to do this one and, um, the Chatham Township one same day?
Correct, the D-Murray one and this one.
What order would they come in, Sean, would you guess?
I can go either way. If there's a preference, I will schedule it.
You have a preference, Pat?
Uh, just because I'm going to, I'll be working over in Annandale. It'll be quicker for me to get to, um, if, if we're going to meet out there at 1:30 or something like that, I got a, I got a meeting before it. So if we can start at the Jarvis Avenue property?
We'll do that.
Then that afternoon looks just peachy.
Yeah, we'll do that.
What time?
AM, no. AM. Okay. It's almost sunup by that time. 9:00 AM at the property, how about that? Are you guys talking morning or? Yeah. You're talking morning, Pat.
Oh, but, yeah, morning, then I, sorry, then I don't care. I, I had grown accustomed to our, uh, our early afternoon visits.
Okay, 9:00 AM, Monday, May 24th?
Here.
Here?
Here.
That okay, everyone? Board members?
Yep.
Yes, I'm good.
All right.
If we're doing that, can we reverse the order, though?
Sure.
And move from, move from Buffalo and go out west? Go to Chatham, go to Chatham first and then out to Corinna here?
That's okay with us.
Me drive all those miles. Do you, do you want to Uber, Pat?
I can drive them either way. All right.
You guys can just pick me up at my house.
Who's going to stay and watch the kids?
You can take them.
No, no. I've got my hands full already. Okay, May 24th, 9:00 AM here. We'll start with the Chatham Township properties first.
D-Murray, correct.
Okay. All right, okay. We're good.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion.
I, I, I have one other, I have one other question. And then maybe it's, maybe we can, maybe we can set this up for next time. But, uh, after restrictions and stuff get lifted, do we want to talk about whether we're going to keep meeting during the day or whether we're going to switch back to evening sessions?
Absolutely. Yeah, so Greg and I have discussed that. And, uh, once, uh, once the, once there's no emergency order, there's not, it's not possible for planning commission members to meet via Teams or via remotely. You have to be in person.
Yep.
So I think once we're in person, we need to be in the evening. So kind of looking at the dates and the future meetings, we were projecting, we were projecting the meeting in July to do that.
Yeah, that, that sounds fine. It sounds like you guys are already on top of it. I just, I, we were starting to get to that time and I wanted to have the conversation if we, if we hadn't had it yet. So I'm, I'm comfortable that you two smart guys will have it all figured out.
If I have, if I have full demands on technology, i.e. emergency order, YouTube, Teams meeting, daytime is when IT's around. If I don't have those requirements or demands and people are in person, then let's be in person in the evening.
Yeah, yeah. I, I would agree with that. I would like to get to evenings myself also.
So we're, we're, we're going, it'll be done before the harvest.
Okay, perfect.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn. Do a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Dan, did you have any discussion?
Nope.
All right. Meeting adjourned.
Greg?
Thank you.
Greg.